All right, we've got several items of business here tonight and our packets are pretty large in size. Some of the information that you have and that I have, you've got just a few of the pages or we would have still been running copies and printing. But everything will be online that you can look at on the website. There's a couple of the agreements in here that are very long and very legalese that just trying to cut down on cost and paper, we just give you a few of the most important pages out of it and then you can pull those up online if you want to review those and look at them closer. The first item we've got is the minutes from our previous meeting, which was back on December the 14th, 2017. You should have a copy of that in your packet of your information. We reviewed these earlier. Does anyone see any corrections or any thing that we need to do on those minutes before I take those into the record? During that, I'll go ahead and sign this into our records. First item on our agenda is under Old Business, it's our Employee Health Clinic Agreement. We tabled this in our last meeting, we didn't have everything quite finalized in order. Basically, this is an agreement where Walker County and Memorial Healthcare Services or Memorial Healthcare Systems, Inc., are entered into an agreement for Memorial to handle our healthcare clinical services. For the last several years, Walker County has had a clinic for its employees and those dependents that are covered under the medical insurance and that clinic has been here on site. And that clinic has been operating four and a half days a week. And we did a, or the previous administration did an intergovernmental agreement a few years back with the city of Lafette to help share in those costs. Walker County government for some time has found it to be more cost-effective to be partially self-insured on their medical coverages and by doing so or find reduction in overall costs by providing an onsite clinic to handle chronic conditions and in order to get our staff members in and out for those services much faster. We are, we had some concerns when I took office about our clinic experience and being able to do what we can do to make that better. So we spent a lot of time researching this and looking at different ideas and options and also the cost for this clinic service. One of my concerns were as part of this clinic service is the dispensing of medication for prescription drugs. And so they have been doing that for some time. I had a lot of concern about that aspect of it. Having that here on site, also we needed a more suitable facility. The facility here is not up to par that I feel like it should be. So being able to partner with Memorial Health Systems, they have been able to offer us two locations of service, one being here in Lafette over here on Highway 136, a new facility that they opened this year. And also they have a location in Chickamauga, which is across the street from the Shaw SI Plant. They're going to be able to have more hours of service for us. They work five and a half days a week and hopefully they'll be able to expand on those hours more so into the future. But most importantly, making this change in the synergies that we'll gain and being able to get it off-site and utilizing their facilities is going to save the county about $40,000 a year in overhead costs that we're experiencing today. So not only are we going to be able to provide a higher level of care and service in multiple locations and extended hours, we're going to be able to capture those synergies of reducing our costs by about $40,000. So we're very excited about this and feel like that this will be a great partnership for Walker County. So we have this agreement, this goes into effect, they'll start providing services for us on January the 2nd of 2018. This agreement does allow either party with proper notice to cancel this agreement at any time. And so it is starting out as a three-year term agreement, but it says under number 5B, termination without cause, either party may terminate this agreement with or without cause at any time prior to the expiration of the term of the agreement to the other party with 90 days of written notice. And so this is an agreement that for every reason something come up, either party decided they wanted to vacate this agreement just a 90-day notice and we can part ways. But we feel real good about it and feel like that they're going to be able to really provide a better service for our employees and their dependents that are on their medical coverage. One of the things too that we're finding, there's a large number of our employees that are dependent of tobacco products. And so that's a real concern for their health and wellness and so we're going to be working with them and doing health risk assessments for all of our employees. And also in 2018, we will have a wellness program to work with our team members to try to help them kick the habit of being dependent on tobacco products to try to help them live a healthier life. So we have this service agreement, you have a copy of, and we're going to go ahead and Business number one, consideration of the 2018 Violence Against Women Act Grant Memorandum of Understanding for Four Points of Walker County. This is just simply memorandum of understanding to show support along with a lot of the other cities and agencies in our community. Four Points, Inc. is a nonprofit tax-exempt organization. They have a facility here in Lafette and this is to show our cooperation along with other law enforcement and other service providers in this community that we've partnered with them in good faith to support their endeavors and work with them and try to help make our community better and work with our children. And so this is just simply a memorandum of understanding of community support and showing that the county is behind them and what they're doing. And this will help them attain the grants that they need to continue their operations. They've been in business for quite some time, they do a great job. This is not costing the county any money, there's not any facilities or anything that we provide. This is just to show that us along with all these other agencies are supporting their endeavor and we feel like that this is an important part of our community in providing this service. Okay, the next item on our agenda is an agreement for probation services between Walker County, Georgia and the Georgia Probation Services, Inc. This is an agreement that you've got just the first couple of pages of and again, we'll have all of this posted on the website or you can look at copies here tonight. But this is just renewing an agreement, the Probation Services, or Georgia Probation Services, Inc. There is an agreement here for probationary services for the state court and also one for the superior court. So this has to be done in collaboration with the court system. Anyone on probation pays a fee for that service and so they collect their fees for operation through those probationary fees. This is agreement you'll see on the second page. This agreement shall commence on January 1, 2018 and shall continue until December 31st, 2018, at which time this agreement shall expire, provided however that this agreement shall automatically renew for four additional one-year periods under the same terms and conditions as are stated herein unless written notice of nonrenewal is provided by one contracting party to the other more than 30 days prior to the annual date of expiration. So for any reason, if we found that they were not providing the services or living up to this agreement, we have an automatic annual trigger here that we can give 30 days notice and look for a new service provider. It's my understanding the other parties involved in this are happy with the service they're providing and will continue on a year-to-year basis with them to provide this service and they're being funded again by the cost of people that are on probation. So there's not any, really any direct cost to the county for this. County attorney has worked with them in concert with the court judges to tweak this agreement out. So it gets into a lot of the language about the responsibilities and the service that they're supposed to provide, the type of employees they're supposed to have, working for them, the level of training, those type of things is really the contents of this, the amount of insurance they have to provide. They're supposed to identify and hold harmless the county against anything that they may do. There's insurance liability requirements in here. So it's just that type of language and verbiage that's in here. The first one here with the state court has Judge Billy Mullenax signing, myself as sole commissioner, then Tony Moreland, Chief Executive Officer of Georgia Probationary Services. All of those parties have signed, we were the last ones to sign on this agreement. Does anybody have any questions on this? Fairly routine that's done.
Excuse me. Where, how many, first let's say, where are these probation officers? Where are they, where is their salary funded? Where did that come from?
It's collected out of the fees.
There is no third-hand.
Yeah, because it states in here that no one probationary officer should be managing more than 350 cases at one time. So that's generating quite a sum, because I think each person on probation pays, I think it's in here, $40, $50 a month to be on probation. So that's, that's how they're being funded for this, to pay for that staff and the stuff related to that and to meet the state requirements.
Is this included in drug court? Is that what I'm thinking, in drug court?
No, this is a separate item. There may be people that are eligible through the superior court, may be on probation, that may be eligible for this, but it's actually really two separate components. Yeah, we're just trying to look in here. I think there's a dollar amount in here that they, that they say, I read through this about two weeks ago. I think it's about $47, I think that's what it was. And this one here is the same thing, word for word, except where the other one says state court, this one says superior court. The terms and conditions are identical, same vendor, same responsibilities. This one just has been signed by the superior court judge, Graham. Okay, and item number three is a little bit more exciting of services that we're going to have. This is a automatic aid agreement with Whitfield County. Their Board of Commissioners has already approved this at one of their previous meetings. Basically, to give you a little background on this, we have a fire station over in the West Amhercy Valley area there at the Civic Center. Up until just October the 1st, that fire station was just a volunteer station only. And we've got a lot of very, very good volunteers over there that we very much depend on and we want them to keep being volunteers and supporting the fire department and we appreciate everything that they do and they're very valuable team members to the volunteer system. But in October, due to some restructuring that Chief Hodge did in our fire department, we went from having three stations that were full-time staff, seven days a week, 24 hours a day, to taking the same amount of manpower and splitting that out over six stations. And part of that plan was, was to also work with neighboring counties on the outer edges to put in automatic aid agreements in place based off of a zone that's been predetermined for that area. So this gets and outlines that because Whitfield County has a station over on the Whitfield County side about five miles from Walker County. They also have a very similar model where they have at least two full-time firemen there 24/7, 365. So in this fire zone that's been created for first response, this will be set up in the 911 database for Walker County and also in Whitfield County. So when calls are dispatched out within that zone, regardless of where the county line is, both stations will respond automatically. Where we currently have with our neighboring communities, what they call a mutual aid. And mutual aid's more of a second or third call out or situation where if you're available, if you have the resources and you know, you want to participate, then you can participate on a mutual. With an automatic aid, it really takes it to the highest level of response because 911 is going to dispatch out two stations simultaneously to get the best and fastest response possible and then allow them to back each other up. So this will give us quite a bit of additional protection over in that area because basically we've gone from only volunteers to where during the day when a lot of those volunteers are out working their full-time Monday through Friday jobs, we were having to send a fire truck from Rock Springs, Georgia. And our response time was 20, 24 minutes or so. They've cut that response time down, down to around six or seven minutes per response. And so we hope in some of these response calls that the Whitfield County station may be, may be closer so we can even re-prove those response times even more. So we're very excited about this and Chief Hodge has worked in concert with the fire chief over in Whitfield County. They've also worked with their commission board, put this agreement together, which is very common in a lot of other communities. But I feel very good about this and there's commitments on both sides with both Walker and Whitfield County both. There's not any money exchanged or anything like that. This is just, hey, let's work together, partner together. We'll give you 100%, you give us 100%. And so that's basically the context of this agreement and the commitment to that. And it states in here, specified service area shall be approximately five miles within Whitfield County from the Walker County-Whitfield County line. So basically create about a five-mile window there to be able to do this. So very exciting about this and I feel like the people in that part of our community will be very happy to see ongoing improvements to the first response in their community. Any questions on this? The terms of this agreement is for a two-year term. There is a, also a provision in here, there's a 90-day notice not to renew this agreement. So there's provisions in here if either party had decided they wanted to exit this agreement. So we feel real good about our relationship with Whitfield County and feel like that this will be very positive once again for us. There is an exhibit one here that does outline the roads and the areas that will be affected. So all of this will be loaded into the GIS system at each 911 center. These are always the good agreements to do. There's no more money involved and better service. Next item on our agenda is the appointment of tax assessor board members. And I'll, we've got a couple of these, I'm just going to read one of these because they're basically a pretty replica of each other. This is resolution number R 024-17. This is a resolution appointing Buddy Chapman as Walker County Tax Assessor Board Member, whereas the sole commissioner of Walker County is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, and whereas OCGA 48-5-295 provides that members of the county board of tax assessors shall be appointed by the county governing authority, whereas a vacancy currently exists on the Walker County Board of Tax Assessors following the term formerly held by MacArthur Heiss, expiring on December 31st, 2017, whereas it is the duty of the county governing authority to appoint members for vacancies on the Walker County Board of Tax Assessors. Whereas pursuant to OCGA 48-5-291, Buddy Chapman is duly qualified to serve as member of the Walker County Board of Tax Assessors and is agreeable to serve the people of Walker County in such capacity. Now therefore be it resolved by sole commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, that the following named individual is hereby appointed, approved and appointed to the Walker County Board of Tax Assessors under the conditions that are set forth by law and for the terms set forth below. Named Buddy Chapman, six-year term beginning on January 1, 2018, expires on 12/31/2023. Sole resolved and appointed this 28th day of December, 2017. Also very sad to report that, we all knew him as Mike Heiss, actually passed away back just a few months ago, had a car accident and didn't pull through that. So we've had this seat actually vacant for a few, few months now, I guess maybe about 90 days or so, right Terry?
October 4th.
October 4th when he passed away. So he was actually at that time the chairman of this board and had served very faithfully to Walker County for many, many years and did an outstanding job and he's been much missed on that board and.
He had a heart attack.
Had a heart attack and had a wreck. So we, we've missed him and we've kept this open up until this point because his term would have expired anyway on 12/31/2017. And so just wanted to go ahead and take care of this now so we can move forward. We also have a letter going to Mr. Chapman. It's a great pleasure that I appoint you to the Walker County Planning Commission Board for a term beginning on January 1, 2018 and expires on December 31st, 2023. Thank you for willingness to serve the citizens of Walker County, we look forward to working with you in 2018. These are six-year terms, that's what's set up in the ordinance for Walker County. So a full term on this board is for six years. There's quite a bit of training that they have to go through with the state. And then they also have to have ongoing continued education. I think he's told me 20 hours a year of continued education that they have to do to keep their certification with the state. So this is a very, very important board and it's a big responsibility and a lot of training that goes into serving on this board. So it's, it's something very, very critical that we have good people. This one here is basically pretty much the same verbiage, except this is an appointment of Steve Ledbetter to the assessors board and he will be filling in for the upcoming expiration term formerly held by John Howard, which also expires on December 31st of 2017. So this is basically a resolution number 25-17. It's also appoint Steve Ledbetter to a six-year term beginning on January 1, 2018 and expires John has served very well also and we will be sending him also a letter thanking him for his service and his dedication and he's a great citizen in Walker County and very active in a lot of other things and we very much appreciate everything that he's done for Walker County. So this also is a letter to Mr. Ledbetter. We have another resolution here for the appointment to the planning and zoning commission board. I'll read this one. Resolution 26-17, resolution adopt, appointing David Hamilton as member of the Walker County Planning Commission, whereas the sole commissioner of Walker County is the county governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, whereas previous ordinances of Walker County, the commissioner appoints members to the Walker County Planning Commission. This will be for a one-year term, Walker County Code Ordinance 3432, whereas a vacancy exists due to the expiring term of Mark Askew on the Walker County Planning Commission for a term which has or will expire on December 31st, 2017, whereas duly the commissioner to appoint members for vacancies to the Walker County Planning Commission, whereas David Hamilton is duly qualified to serve as a member of Walker County Planning Commission is agreeable to serve the people of Walker County in this capacity. Now therefore be it resolved by sole commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, the following named individual is hereby appointed, approved and appointed to the Walker County Planning Commission under such conditions as set forth by law for the terms set forth below. David Hamilton, one-year term. Let me give you a little explanation on this one. Typically, these are four-year board appointments. There's 12 members on this board and so you would have three members that come up, excuse me, four members that would come up every year for appointments. We got to looking at the history in the log and sometime in the last three or four years, they got off on their rotation. I don't know if someone left here in the middle of the term and they just didn't get the documents right. So to get us back on track, we are actually only doing David Hamilton's term for one year. And then after this one year, he would be eligible to be reappointed at that time if we agreed to do so when he was willing to serve. So this is a little bit of a housekeeping to get that back on track where we get the rotation and get the balance back to the board in the proper order. Also, one of my goals has been, since I took office, as some of these terms come up to be expired, I feel like that boards that I appoint people to from my office should be filled by private citizens that are county residents. I don't feel that it's in the best interest of the county to have county employees serving on boards that are of any importance in all, which they're all important, this is one that's extremely important, but to have them in voting positions. And so that's a practice that has been pretty widespread in this county in the past where a lot of these boards were filled by county employees. And so I'm working to change that because I feel like it should be private citizens. And so Mark Askew is a very valuable employee to Walker County. He's our codes, building inspector, has a tremendous amount of knowledge and training, been with the county, I think. been with the county, I think around 16, 17 years now, does an outstanding job. This is nothing against him at all personally. I had a conversation with him today to make sure he fully understands this and he remembered he and I talked about this about a year ago, that this is the direction that we will be moving with all board appointments and it has nothing to do with him personally. So Mark will still be attending these meetings in his capacity as a code official for Walker County. So he brings a lot of knowledge to the table, he just will not be an active board member in a voting position. He will be there for information, guidance, advice and input at those meetings and not in a voting capacity. Any questions on this one? Also here we have a letter to David Hamilton, welcoming him. I've run out of ink. Also on the planning commission, there are three other members that's terms were, are up for expiration or reappointment. And so we have basically the same resolution here for Maurice Gass, lives in Walker County. This will be reappointing him to the planning commission for an additional four-year term. I spoke to him, he's very excited about being reappointed and he does an excellent job on that board. Also brings a lot of knowledge and experience with his tenure. Also very similar, similar here, same thing, term expiration December 31st for Susan Tankersley, who lives over in Flintstone. We will reappoint her to the planning board. And also Terry Newberry, his expired term, we'll reappoint him for four years as well. Next one is appointment to the North Georgia Regional Emergency Medical Services Council. We didn't have to have a resolution for this. This is to Mr. Pitt. It is with great pleasure that I reappoint you for another two-year term ending January of 2020. Your term began on January 1, 2018. Your term will begin on January 1, 2018 and expire on December 31st of 2020. Thank you for your willingness to serve the citizens of Walker County, look forward to working with you in 2018. That is Mr. Pitt's letter. Also, this is Scott Lewis is a representative from Walker County on the Northwest Georgia Regional One Emergency Medical Service Council, whose term expires on December 31st of 2018. Scott Lewis is no longer an employee of Walker County, therefore I hereby appoint Fire Chief Blake Hodge for the remaining of this term ending December 31st of 2018. Item number seven here declaring the following equipment from the Walker County landfill to unserviceable and to remove from the county inventory, a steel weed eater FS 76 serial number 29094665. So if you just wore out the weed eater-
We worn it out, yeah. It's kaput.
It's kaput. We've sucked all the life out of it.
Yeah, we've savaged what is good, but we're done.
We're done. Yeah, all of, any type of equipment is in inventory with the county. Anytime something is just wore out or needs to be disposed of, has to come before the commissioner, so we have that on record of disposing that item. So, and there's, there's no value in this weed eater, it's, it's end of life. Okay, our statistical data report for November 2017. You'll see in this report that we do each month, try to keep the citizens informed on our progress. Just more and more pleased every month with the progress that's made at our animal shelter. Our adoption, rescue, return to owner rate continues to climb. In November, there was 79 dogs that were returned or adopted out and 10 cats. They continue, under the new leadership, to reduce the number of euthanized animals at our shelter. I believe by far this is the lowest month we've ever had where there's only four dogs and three cats. So that's tremendous progress and you'll see year-to-date totals there and then our actual comparison against the yearly totals of 2016. So when we looked at comparable data, we're, we're heading in the right direction. Code enforcement's been a big emphasis this year. Our code officers have found 554 properties that they've inspected in the month of November to be in compliance. They did find 86 properties with at least one code violation that they wrote a citation for. Close cases 19 for the month. Our fire department, they responded to 503 responses and 433 of those were done with our quick response vehicles. We were projecting that our call volume this year was definitely gonna be 4,000 calls plus. It looks like we're gonna be closer to 5,000 calls and our response time is, continues to improve under the new format of, of our equipment, the type of vehicles that we're using and the way we have stationed our personnel. So Chief Hodge has done a great job with that team and continues to make progress. Our litter detail pickup is still is amazing, the amount of trash we're picking up off the sides of the roads every month. That team picked up 8,960 pounds and still another 189 tires. So we're 115,040 pounds for the year. Mountain Cove Farm continues to have a great showing. They actually had 155 individual nights booked in the month of November and that probably sets a record, I would say. I was impressed with October's numbers and November's really just pulling it out of the water. So last year in 2016, there was only 162 nights. In 2017, we're already at 478. So we've really made a tremendous amount of progress there, got a great team of folks there that are really energized and motivated to, to get people excited about wanting to stay at Mountain Cove Farms. New single-family home construction, we had seven new permits in November, so we've topped last year's number by three permits and I'm sure we'll have some more in December. So new home construction, single-family home construction in Walker County, year-to-date is 126 versus 123 for all of last year. Our public relations and social media numbers are still impressive. We're continuing to have more and more people like and follow our Facebook page. Had 246 new likes, 281 new followers and Joe was able to make 65 posts for the month of November, so he's keeping that site very active and 20,435 unique visitors to our website. And by next week, I made a mistake last night and said by Friday, but we've got some, some setting changes that has to be done through the service providers, it takes two or three days for that to swap over to recognize the DNS settings of the new site. So by next week, we'll have our new website up and going that Joe's been working on, so we're excited about that. It's one of the things we had, had on our to-do list for 2017 and we're gonna get that knocked out. And so there'll be much more information on the site. All right. That officially adjourns our meeting for tonight. At this time, we'll open up the floor for any open comments or discussions at this meeting.
How many people are covered as part of this Riverland Memorial?
Do you remember Charlene, is there 360, was it 367? I think there's about 367 employees and some of them have dependents, so it's gonna be north of 400 lives that would actually utilize that facility for that service.
And you said that the agreement would save you guys about $40,000 a year.
Right.
Do you know how much you guys were spending with Southern Clinic Services?
The, the actual contract with them was $25,000 a month that was in place, plus we paid additionally for all of the supplies, materials, software, upkeep and maintenance of all the equipment, all the purchase of the equipment. And so utility cost, internet service, there was all of those additional costs. So when we take a look at all of that combined, we anticipate saving at least $40,000 a year.
What, what do you think you guys were paying per year with Southern Clinic Services? Can you factor all that in?
Well, it's going to be, you take, with, with everything that's provided, you would take the amount of the current agreement plus $40,000.
Well, what's the amount of the current agreement?
Uh, was it two, was it one?
So we don't know what the agreement with Southern Medical cost us?
Well, it was broken out. We paid them for their labor, just labor only. It's $25,000 per month was their agreement. Plus you had consumable products and supplies and those type things, plus software, computer maintenance, internet service.
So that was a different kind of, kind of hanging up?
Yes, it was, we actually was direct billed.
On exhibit A, it says that the annual fee for clinic services is $212,000.
That's it.
But then obviously under that it has, you know, like respiratory clearance is $35, chest x-rays is $20. Would the county be paying that or would the board be paying that?
The county will be paying that because what happened, we didn't have onsite x-rays is one example, so anytime someone needed an x-ray, we were having to send them to another third-party provider typically up in Fort Outhor. So that bill would be another office visit plus the test and also they have a nominal fee, I think it's $20 to actually just read the x-ray. So they'll provide the service, the appointment, everything and it's just another $20 charge. So we're gonna see additional savings on that as well.
Instead of the contract that the county would be billed by one word every month, is that for those other services in addition to whatever?
Yes, they'll take the annual amount, divide that by 12 plus any of the additional incidentals that's in that exhibit.
Gotcha. And you said this, this weekend, a couple weeks ago, that one of the big reasons why you wanted to make this move is you were uncomfortable with the idea of dispensing prescription drugs here in the office.
Yes.
Why, why is that? Are you uncomfortable by that?
The, just the security of the building. You know, having that type of product in this building, having a valid inventory system for those type products, the responsibility and the liability for the county government to be into the prescription drug dispensing business by having onsite contract employees basically doing that. I just felt like there was a lot of liability risk. If someone by chance was prescribed the wrong product, had allergic reaction, or someone broke in and stole the inventory, there's just a lot of risk. But now we're shifting that completely away to total arms length apart. Also too, there's more and more requirements for HIPAA requirements and so trying to manage an onsite clinic and keeping up with the ongoing regulation changes and trying to manage that and Walker County government being in the healthcare facility business is a business we shouldn't try to be in when there's professional service providers that can do it on a much bigger scale and have the synergies, the expertise and the management in place to manage that that we just didn't have. Yes?
Is the exercise facility, as we went to that earlier tonight, is that in with the health, I mean, is that still in the county's health plan to have a, to have the employees work out at the, up here in Rock Springs?
That agreement, we ended that in October. The previous administration had set up an agreement with the fitness center there in Rock Springs, which was called, or is called Key Fitness, and the county was spending $3,900 a month for that service. We didn't see the utilization or the return on that investment, so we looked at that as a dead expense to the county and so under the new budget, that was taken out of the budget and we feel like we can use those dollars elsewhere to be more productive in our healthcare.
Thank you, swing leg.
Any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. I'm trying to understand about this Violence Against Women's Act. I realize it's a non-credit. And as I'm reading through it, Domestic Violence Task Force Coordinator, four points, it says here, shall be responsible for the supervision of that coordinator and shall conduct appropriate criminal records investigation. As said, staff member may be responsible for direct contact with victims and their families. Four points shall be responsible for ensuring that the staff member shall be clear of criminal conviction in the last five years of murder, kidnapping, rape, armed robbery, cruelty to children, sexual offenses, aggravated assault, aggravated battery, aggravated stalking, arson, drug-related offenses and any other crime listed under the Georgia Family Violence Act. If I was calling on these people and I was a victim of violence, I wouldn't want to know that that person six years ago committed any of those crimes.
That would be something that would be the four points board policy and procedures. So that'd be something that you may want to-
But isn't that part of us working with them?
Yeah, we, we are, but we're not setting their policies.
So are those people going to people in Walker County for helping them under these situations?
You say those people.
Four points or who go, who, who?
A lot of times-
The Domestic Violence Task Force Coordinator.
A lot of times the police officers will refer people to that service as a, as a service provider in the community, counselors, school systems, they get a lot of referrals for people to make them aware that that service is provided. They actually have a facility over here in the city of Lafette where they provide a safe place for parents to have visitation with their children that's under supervision and where DFAX is involved and those type things. So they, they deal with a lot of very difficult circumstances.
Right.
And so they're, they have a governing board involved- And so they're, they have a governing board and body that they work under and they work into, apply for funding or grants, they do fundraisers and all to generate the revenue to continue to offer that service. We're simply just saying, uh, we want to support their efforts and their mission to, you know, try to help our community with family violence and dealing with those type of issues. So we're not, um, setting their board policies. We don't have anything to do with their, their budgeting or any of those type of things. And so, uh, I see your point that their standards may need to be looked at as far as their personnel requirement, background checks and those type of things. But as the commissioner of the county, it would probably not be appropriate for me to be the one to do that.
But we're working with them? We're allowing them to?
Our other options are no services. That's, 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 there's not any other service providers that I'm aware of.
I think, I think most of those convictions and charges you might have talked about, they're probably gonna be on sexual offenders list or life.
That's a good point.
First-degree murder charge on their record, it's probably not gonna get a higher either.
People lost five years.
It's still been there.
I see where you're coming from and I, I think it's a valid concern or valid question for their board. Or to ask them if, you know, maybe that's the minimum, maybe they look further back than that, I'm not sure. But, uh, they do have a good reputation. To my knowledge, they're providing a good service and, uh, they're a very valuable resource in our community that they provide.
I understand.
Yeah. I see your point. Who's next? Yes, sir.
Uh, is there any immediate plans on, uh, dates for upgrading our codes, nuisance around phones?
Yes, glad you brought that up.
Immediate, I'm talking.
We have a scheduled public hearing that we're going to have on January the thirtieth at six o'clock at the LaFayette Walker County Library, which is three doors down.
What, what time?
Uh, six o'clock, I believe it is. Yeah, six o'clock on January the thirtieth. It's gonna be our first public hearing to, uh, let the public come in and express concerns, ideas, solutions. Um, all of the above. We want to hear what the citizens are concerned about. We'll have copies there of our existing, uh, ordinances as we discussed here a couple of months ago. They've not been touched probably since nineteen seventy-something. And, uh, they're way, way past due of a complete rewrite and overhaul.
I don't know whether they've been touched or changed or not, but I've had copies of them prior and I had copies of them now. And they're, they're not the same. Like used to, they could have, uh, I think it was like on the abandoned automobiles, they had to be undercover in a garage or something like that. And then, and then now that's not even in the, the copy of the codes that I have.
Well, that's, that's another existing problem that we're also working on is that the code book has not been touched in about twelve years. And so all of the new ordinances or changes to ordinances or resolutions that affect that code book has never been, I say never been, in the last twelve years or so, has not been updated into that book. And so you could have a copy of the book and you don't know what's happened since then or what changes have been made. So it's been very splintered. So we are working with a company that this is what they do called Mini Code. And they're gonna take our code book and we're going back through all of the minute books for the last sixteen years, page by page. And going to be pulling out and copying to them anything that would affect that code book. They're gonna take and quantify that data, get it in the right section, and they're gonna do a legal review of the complete book and give us re, uh, recommendations back on things that we need to change due to the, they're, they're just so far out of date or maybe state laws changed. Uh, there's gonna be things that we've not thought of that they've seen in other communities. But the biggest thing that's going to help us, they're gonna get that into a database that will be online. That will be attached to our website and will be hosted by their server, a third-party, that will be searchable. So if you wanna think of an item, you know, like, uh, you know, abandoned cars or used cars or whatever, you can put those keywords in there and anything that's in that code book that refers to that, it'll, it'll give you a search, like a Google search, so to speak. And then you can print out what pages that you want, or you can PDF it or save it or whatever. And then ongoing, anytime we have new ordinances and resolutions, we're gonna immediately send those into them and not wait twelve, fifteen, sixteen years. And then the online database will be continually updated on an as-needed basis. But it's gonna take us about fifteen months to get it done, they tell me.
Mini what?
Mini code. And, uh, it's a major, major process to get it done. And so, uh, we've got a lady that's paralegal that will be coming in starting in January. That's gonna be going through this database of all these books in here of all the prior meetings, of every commission meeting back the last sixteen-plus years. And pulling all that information and scanning it and sending it to them. And so based off of the scope of work that Mini Code sees that we need, based off our size of county and all, uh, they're telling us in all the review process and then getting it online, it's probably gonna take about fifteen months to get it done. Uh, but in the meantime, we're still going to be working and, and concert to get our animal control ordinances updated. We see a lot of areas there that need to be revised. And so we've had that on our agenda for January, so we're gonna start our first public meeting. That'll be probably one of several, because once we come back with some drafts of ordinance changes out of recommendations and suggestions, we'll put those out there of what we're looking at for public comment and for people to, uh, to give us additional input on those and make sure we're not missing anything. So it, it, you know, it's gonna probably be a three or four-month process to do it right. And I'd rather do it right and pace ourselves and not just rush through it than to do it wrong and do it fast. I mean, it's been this many years, two, three, four months, it's not gonna kill us if we can get it right.
This January the thirtieth, that time is six o'clock?
Six o'clock.
And that's at the, where?
It's at the, uh, LaFayette Walker County Library, which is, you got the courthouse here next to us. Next to that is the Department of Education, next to that City Hall, and then next to that's the library. So it's three buildings down on Doom Street here. They've got a much bigger meeting room. They've got a very nice overhead projector system that we can use. And so, uh, since it's not a meeting where we're taking action, we can hold that outside of this venue. And so that's, is a facility that we can use and won't cost us anything. Uh, that'd be much more comfortable and better to, uh, have dialogue about this. And so we wanted to get this out early and so, uh, next week Joe's gonna be starting to push information out publicly about it. Since he came up tonight, we'll go ahead and mention that, that we've already got that on the calendar. Yes?
Uh, here on multimedia today, I guess Mr. Legg did a good job on that. Did we save seventeen thousand dollars on interest fees on the eight million dollars? Do we know what, of course, we know what the, uh, charges were on the eight million overall or individually or, I mean, interest and fees on the eight million?
Yes, um, we've got that in the press release. I'll have that in front of you. But in round numbers, and I can get you the, the press release before you go to the scat to the dollar. But, uh, we had a four million dollar tax anticipation note with Bank of LaFayette that we took out in January of twenty seventeen. The interest on that at two-point-nine-five percent interest rate was a little over ninety-one thousand dollars. We took out a second tax anticipation note with the First Volunteer Bank here in LaFayette back in June. They set that up also as a line of credit for four million dollars. We only pulled and utilized three-and-a-half million dollars of that. That interest rate was at three-and-a-quarter percent and the interest on that was, uh, I think about forty-three thousand dollars and change. So we had a lot of our citizens that were able to pay their taxes early this year, once they got the tax bills. And so on November the eleventh, I was able to take Bank of LaFayette a million-dollar payment against that loan. And then on December the twelfth, I was able to go back with another two-million-dollar payment. And then on Friday, December the twenty-second, I took them the remaining million-dollar payment plus the ninety-one thousand dollar and change in interest. And also took First Volunteer Bank, uh, three-and-a-half million dollar payoff plus the forty-three thousand dollars in change in interest to pay that off. That was our goal, was to get that paid off before Christmas. Uh, many years and times passed, they come down to the very last day and come down to the wire. Uh, but our, uh, tax collections, people were able to, as much as possible to pay before the due date. Uh, Tax Commissioner's Office was great to work with in getting those distributions to us every couple of weeks. And so we had enough income come in on, uh, December twenty-second to be able to get those paid off early. And so we saved a little over twelve thousand dollars in interest because we were able to start paying on it in November. There was a half million dollars we didn't have to borrow, so we come in with a little over twelve thousand dollars in savings over what our budget projections were.
So when you got that money, um, you were at least in part paying back some overdue? And I assume the interest secured on those overdue?
What I stepped into, is we had a little over three-and-a-half million dollars worth of invoices laying on my desk that were either due or past due. Tax collections had just come in and we had roughly eight hundred thousand dollars in the bank.
Okay, so, but of the, let's put some out here, uh, one hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, uh, that we did pay in interest, fees, whatever, you probably saved that in paying the old debts? Or were those gonna be interest secured on the outstanding debts? Late fees, whatever, whatever?
A lot of it was to meet payroll. Uh, when we have a payroll that's a little over a million dollars a month, uh, we, when we did our, um, projection of cash flow needs, we knew the second week of January, we were gonna be eight million dollars short roughly to get us through the year. Uh, so to give you a comparison, I pulled up this press release. Back in twenty sixteen, last year, the former commissioner did a five-million-dollar tax anticipation note. They paid two-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand, three-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars in fees and interest and borrowed two-and-a-half million dollars less for a shorter period of time.
So that was the mafia in New York, they got that from?
They got that from the loan sharks in Atlanta on that one. So we borrowed two-and-a-half million dollars more, dealing with the local banks, we spent a hundred and thirty-five thousand, a hundred and thirty-three dollars in interest and fees, which saved the county over the prior year a hundred and twenty-three thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty dollars. So the problem is, is we shouldn't be in a position where we have to do this at all. If the, if the county had been managed properly over the years, uh, you wouldn't have to do a tax anticipation note, period. Our cash projections for twenty eighteen, we're anticipating we'll have positive cash flow until probably somewhere around May or June of twenty eighteen. This year, it was the second week or really the first week of January. So we're gonna be able to extend the time that we're not gonna need the money. And then we're projecting we're gonna need less money by about two million dollars.
So essentially between the, somewhere in the year, you're always needing a credit line?
Uh, that's been the history for Walker County for some time. Uh, we feel like we can break that cycle. But based off our projections and paying off debt, now it's gonna probably take us till, uh, the end of twenty twenty to break this cycle to get off of these tax anticipation notes. So every year, we want to push the timeline out and reduce the amount. And so we hope and plan outside of some disaster, because we have no reserve funds. And so if we have a disaster, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna be into this pretty deep. But if we can reduce that by a couple of million dollars every year and not have to borrow the money as quick, the interest will continue to drop. Because we're, you know, we're taking hundreds of thousands of dollars in interest that's just bad management.
I'm just, now that you mention it, I'm wondering how, as possible, I can get them to that three-hundred-and-sixty-seven employees with a million dollars a month?
We have over four-hundred-and-twenty employees. But there was three-hundred-and-sixty-seven roughly that actually took out the county health insurance.
Four and four-hundred and?
I think it's about four-twenty-three. So payroll's a little over a million a month to, to cover that. So when I took office, I only had an eight-hundred thousand in the bank. I knew my first payroll for that month was two-hundred thousand more than I had. And I got a stack of bills over here and by that second week, before we could get to the bank with our plan, I had cutoff notices from the utility providers, it's gonna cut all electricity off. And rightfully so. I don't blame them. So we, we were that far upside down and fortunately, uh, the Bank of LaFayette and First Volunteer Bank believed in Walker County. They believed in this administration. Uh, none of the local banks had been loaning Walker County Government money in several years. Reaching out, first of all, to Bank of LaFayette and them believing in what we were doing and trusting that we were gonna have the right plan and the revenue to pay that back.
So then, uh, you pay, they probably look at the board to the next time you need credit, credit money?
They, they are, but it was, it was.
Ninety-one thousand dollars and forty-three thousand dollars and that's not bad.
You know, but, uh, they took a lot of risk still. Still at that, they took a lot of risk. And I had, um, seven other banks tell me no. You know, when, you know, Bank of LaFayette helped us very quickly and I can't say enough positive about Bank of LaFayette. But in that next several months, trying to find that second four million dollars, I had seven other banks tell me no before I found First Volunteer would say yes. And so we were, we were pretty close to the cliff back in May and June of, of running completely out of money to operate. Very close. I had already been to the Capitol, to Atlanta, figure out what day of the week they wanted the county back.
They only don't see us when it's election time.
That's why I went to see them.
Well, in my opinion, they don't care about us when it's election time.
They do, sometime you gotta go to their space. Who's next?
Who's by the air langer? Is I need?
Air langer, uh, it looks like they're trying to schedule, uh, depositions in February. So we'll get to air everything out with depositions. Um, they still have the pending court cases. But I'm still, I'm still hopeful and prayerful that we can come to, to an agreement. Uh, you never say never and you never give up. But, uh, we still owe Air Langer eight-point-seven million dollars. We do have the public health fee that we're collecting to be able to start making payments.
Then we don't know that we have collected on the public health fee?
I don't know on that. Um, and not all of that is billed, you know, this time of year, some of it's billed for the mobile homes and stuff. So it's gonna come in throughout the whole calendar cycle. But, uh, I don't, I don't have those numbers right off. Uh, so, you know, I'm still very hopeful that we can come to some resolution, but we don't have anything at this time. Uh, but the clock is ticking. Good question.
Okay.
Yes?
Quite a bit about the roads.
Yes.
And, uh, I live on Center Road Road, but I've been talking about Greg, uh, Jones Road also. And, uh, they come up there the other day, and I talked about this back before you came in, Doc. And, uh, they striped it both in the middle and the sides. But in place that road is so bad, they had to skip about five, six foot, come up, they couldn't strike. And put up brand-new signs, curved. lift and put up brand new signs, curved and all this stuff. And that's a waste of money before we pay that money.
Government at work. That was a hundred percent funded grant that started with the previous administration about two years ago, uh, where the state got some extra funding for road safety. And so they come in with the thermoplastic paint, it's the better paint, uh, reflectors and new road signs that are more reflective, more visible to try to enhance road safety. Because the federal government is now grading each state more so now than ever on road safety. So they've got real aggressive and, and did this. The disappointing part is, is we didn't have any interaction with that and they contracted out directly with the service providers to do the work. They snuck in on us here one weekend, a couple of months ago and started before we were even able to get the roadside scraped. You know, we communicated with them and said, hey, give us a two or three day head start so we can sweep and clean and get the roadsides and they come in here one weekend and just started. So they had to go back and redo some places because they sprayed the, the oak tree leaves laying on the side of the road. So, uh, they were supposed to be finished by December thirty-first. They're not going to make it because they're not even here now working. And so it's been very disappointing that they haven't got it done. Our hands are tied because it's a state project using federal dollars, dealing directly with a state contractor. And, uh, it's, it's been frustrating.
But what might, what might be upset about, the guy from, uh, the other administration, he said he didn't even know what the thing was going on down here. Said what kind of beef was that, don't even, he didn't even know anything of that.
Well, the previous administration submitted a list of roads and the road miles and all that they did. And so all of that was pre-selected and done well over a year before they ever started.
See, he doesn't know that, you know, and I told him, but you need to come down here.
Yeah, so it's, it's, uh, it's one of those, you just shake your head, you know, it's, it's, it's been frustrating.
But I've been having trouble on the roadside road with some lines, hate to keep me in the middle of the road.
Yeah, but, uh.
But I made the long and central road road back that, that, that big round, that that deep. Now I had to go on the other side of the road, you know, it's sad, it'll knock you.
Well, one thing that we're working on for twenty eighteen is to have all our, have all of our roads evaluated and assessed by an engineering firm, put that into a GIS database, have all the bridges inspected and grade all of these roads and bridges to help us come up with a game plan of how we're going to start attacking these and using this T-Splash money. So, uh, the T-Splash collection started all, uh, April first. We hope to start seeing some of that funding by July. And, uh, hopefully by summertime, we can get started on doing some work.
And I, well, what, uh, I've seen part of the name, it's in Walker County Police.
Yeah.
So what's their deal?
Well, they, uh.
They got a hundred county cars?
Yeah.
And I don't know why, kind of, what kind of police, what?
They, uh, primarily code enforcement. Uh, they can enforce ordinances, any type of ordinance on the books. They are, uh, certified mandated officers. Uh, so the, Walker County's had a county police department for several years. There's, uh, I mean, staff member, you got, it's one of Walker County that's actually mandated. Three.
Four, I'm sorry, just four.
Four, so David Brown's over that department. That's, we consolidated this year for efficiencies with code enforcement, building inspection, animal control is another part of that. You had, you need a mandated officer to go out for, for, uh, ordinances and control for animals.
Yeah, I just wanted to know, except for you got a hundred cars down here at the county and I want.
But they operate separately, uh, from the sheriff's department completely and they operate directly under the commissioner's office.
And somebody's told me this the other day, I told him, uh, Walker County, they told me this, oh, hey, I said they can't write speeding tickets. I stand and scout, said you see there a marijuana, this, this, that, which you never seen in our county back to speed.
Well, the sheriff's department has the legal rights to write speeding tickets on certain roads. Uh, the state of Georgia has to come in and approve the road that they actually can write tickets on. So they have a list of the roads that they can and cannot write tickets on.
I don't know, because I know mine's like seventy-five, seven road.
So, yeah, but, uh, you check with one of the deputies of the sheriff's office and they could tell you, they could pull that in their database and see uh, if they have been approved.
Because you can follow them down the road and save you eighty mile there. And they got no blue light on. Any day you want to come down there, you follow them down the road and save you eighty mile there.
Yeah, talk, uh, talk to Mr. Wilson.
I thank you.
Oh, sure. Okay, what else?
Mr. David Brown, here.
Yes, uh, I'll let y'all talk after the meeting. He's got some, uh, code issues and some neighboring property he wants to get with you on and get on y'all's task list. So, yeah, David, if you see you, then the meeting, talk to, to Robert. Okay, anybody else? All right, that ends our meeting, appreciate y'all coming out, hope everybody has a happy new year. Thank you for coming.